This conference will now be recorded.
Commissioner. Ready for roll calls? Mary Benton?
Yes, I'm here.
Lloyd Colston?
Here.
Fazley Howerton? Brandon Jelling?
Here.
Ian Coon?
Here.
Kyle Lewis?
Here.
Cody Richardson?
Here.
Joni Spicer?
Here.
And Tom Weegley?
Here.
All right, so the public comments. I don't think anybody's here, so I'm just gonna skip that. So, meeting minutes from last month. The motion to approve, bring those into record. So I need a motion to approve the last one's meeting minutes. Yes, okay.
Same.
All right, so the meeting minutes from last month are approved. So we're going to the agenda. So we'll take it from here, Jon.
Yep, we have a pretty simple agenda today, but it's not a simple topic. I wanted to start off by mentioning a couple of things. First of all, I think most of you know, Andrew, this is the last meeting, he'll be with us. So he's taken off for purple land. He's colder up there, he's colder than that. The other thing I wanted to mention was the Main Street Association of Arc City. They're not officially formed yet, but they are actually waiting, should hear something this week if we were accepted. But in the meantime, while we're waiting on that, and actually, we wouldn't actually get the definition until January anyways. The board would like to meet with the several other boards. And what they decided to do was kind of informal. And what they're asking is that somebody from the boards that they talked about, so it would be the planning commission, we'll get the start restoration board, their beautification board will be, so several of those kind of boards that will be affected by anything that they do. And they may want some input from the various boards that I just mentioned too. So they're asking that some or just one person from each board would attend. And what they're planning to do is meet at Thursday, Thursday, on March 31st at the Burgh. So that toes to how informal they're intending for this to be. But the idea is a little bit of networking so that the people from the board can get to know who's on the Main Street Committee, and the people on the Main Street Committee can know who they can talk to. Basically, I think what Fazley was asking was just to have everybody talk about what the board does. If there's nobody at the meeting, then I will take that. But I would appreciate it if somebody shows up. And again, it's Thursday, Thursday, so if that's your thing, you can do that too. That's not my thing, but I'll be there. So if anybody's interested in that, that's the date. I don't know the exact time, but I will definitely send that back out. I just wanted to let you know tonight that's going to be on my. We don't have to, if we have a quorum, then it's a meeting, but all it'll be is I'll make a note of it and we'll put that in there.
And on the form maker, then I just won't go.
I'll take care of that. We just have to be careful, we talked about that at length yesterday, that it's a public meeting if people attend, that have a quorum, so. And there'll be people that are on more than one board. There's that too. That's pretty much all I had to say about those things. So with that being said, let's dig into housing. And so what I propose to do this evening, because we have done a lot related to housing, I don't want to go through each one. I'm gonna go through this section. We're not gonna spend a lot of time on this discussion, because we have discussed this a lot. Basically, what I wanted to talk about was what changes that I've made since we talked about this. And I want to focus the most this evening on coming up with a list of goals or actions that we want to have at the end of this chapter. So I'm just gonna start with this first section. Basically, the only thing that changed the introduction was I added the information about the housing assessment tool or the hat. Not a big deal there. And I also updated the, this section with the WSU population projections. So that we saw in chapter one already anyway. So that was, that was a paragraph that was in this chapter, and it just needed to be updated to match what this was. That's pretty much it for that section. Didn't change anything in the vision section. And in background, the thing that I changed there, we talked the last month about there being a little bit too much census data. I think Lloyd mentioned that in chapter one. Well, what I chose to do was take a chunk of that out of chapter one and put it in chapter three. It's more appropriate here anyways. And there's a couple paragraphs there at the end of this section. It's housing related anyways. So it talks just a really short thing about what our racial mix is, Hispanic makeup, and see household ties, I can't remember. And then the next several pages after that are just the tables of that information. Yeah, you might think that this is a lot of information, just a lot of numbers and stuff. But it is important to understand why we're making the decisions that we're making, why we have the goals that we're making. So that's, that's why that's, all this data here is not the 2020 census stuff. This is from the American Community Survey. So try not to dwell too much on the margin of errors, because some of them are pretty high. But it does, it's still a pretty good way to see the different information about household type, household makeup, that kind of thing. And housing value. Then I did include a table that, it's actually, we used this when we did the hat. It's a table of the household age. So the idea there being that you look at that table, you'll notice a very alarming number at the top, that the majority by far of our housing is 1939 year before. So we have older housing. Now, the 2010 to present number is, is now out of date. It should be higher than that, but this was the number that came from 2020. So I don't really feel the need to update that too much, because that, we'll get into the weeds. But we are increasing housing in 2010. So I'm just gonna keep going unless somebody wants to stop me. The next section, previously, there was housing recommendations from a plan from 2010. Well, that's 20, that's 12 years old now. And so it was a little out of date. So what I chose to do instead was to bring in the county's housing study that they did, Little Park, in 2014. They did a countywide housing study, and out of that came a five-year housing action plan that was supposed to be fulfilled by 2019. Where you think, why do I want to put a plan that was supposed to be done until the 19th? And it's, well, you probably already know the answer to that. Most of the stuff was not done by the county, or really either of the cities. So I think it's important to look at each one of these. There's some stuff in there that's been done, actually, that has been done. There's some stuff in there that probably was not good advice. And there's some stuff in there that's some good stuff. And so when I put that in there, thinking, what was that?
I'll make a note of it on 3.4, you're missing the digit 1, 2, 0, 1, 9.
I already noticed that too. Okay. I highlighted, I was gonna mention, forgot. Yes, I noticed that I made that typo. But basically, I just thought that was better by 2010, it's more up to date. And I figured that we could use some of these as a platform to develop some goals. Somebody's already done the study. If we can recycle it, let's recycle it. Let me go use it all, but it is kind of long, it's about two pages worth of recommendations, so there's still some good things. So 3.5 is basically, it was just a summary of the housing assessment. At the end of the housing assessment tool, there is a whole page that has a summary. So this is a summary of the summaries. I just pared it down to just a little bit shorter, picked out some of the high points then. And obviously, because we're not using this summary for the grant that we got, there was some stuff in there that didn't need to be for this, so I kind of paraphrased it, shortened that down. But it basically talks about the findings and the recommendations from that one, which is obviously more relevant than the 2014 to 19 plan before it. So that's some nice, good, newer information. And I even brought a copy of the hat if we want to reference it, maybe today when we do our calls. But that's just the summary there. 3.6 is the survey results from the housing survey that we did as part of the hat process. And I put a note there that we, asking if we should phase out the older surveys. Well, I kind of took a liberty there, and I just struck the surveys. Because this is more up-to-date data. I kind of did some cursory analysis as I was writing these. Feel free to disagree with my analysis, but that's what I did. And I included all of the, included the charts. I debated about how to display the data, but it seems the charts are pretty good with the tool. So that's, that's what's at. The next part of that is just some responses from the open-ended questions. I didn't, I didn't put a word cloud in this one, I guess. I must have done that in the in another chapter, so I could probably put a word cloud in there too if we wanted. But there's just a certain, I don't know what the word is. I think it's helpful to have the direct quotes in there, just to hear a little bit about what people were saying. For the most part, I didn't edit them. There, I think there was a name or a reference to an identifiable person in one of them, so I eliminated that out of that last section, because we don't want to throw anybody under the bus or anything like that. It's not necessary for this document. We'll probably include the results of the survey anyways, as an appendix. So if somebody really wants to read that, they can probably do it. And I don't, I can't even remember what it was I took out. It was something that I felt was probably not appropriate, like I said. So finally, not finally, second to finally, is this new section that I think it was probably Charles that mentioned this region, I can't remember. But noted that we don't seem to talk about what our accomplishments from the last plan were. And the discussion that we had that day was, if you don't know where you were, what you've accomplished, how are you going to improve? So I kind of grabbed onto that. And I created this section. And all I really did was summarize the activities that we have done since the plan. And I figured I would just really quickly do an overview of what I wrote here, unless you just want to read it. Feel free to read it while I'm talking, if that doesn't bother you. So I started out, I talked about the plans, the studies that we've done, kind of summarized that, so we've actually done some studies. I noted that COVID-19 has definitely affected our housing situation too. Also noted that in 2018, we got a moderate housing, moderate income housing grant. And that is what put in the infrastructure for the Compass Point development. It paid for the, well, it didn't pay 100%. It was $400,000. It paid to help putting the water, the sewer, streets, the drain, the drainage out there. The city ended up taking the balance of that on. So it's all been funded already, there's no special assessments or anything out there, mostly due to this grant. Also, in 2019, we got the new senior housing complex that Linky was safe, was built down by Veterans League. So that added 48 minutes. And I noted in '21, we did the housing assessment tool. And that we did get the grant for that. In fact, I, as a side note, I just went up a couple weeks ago to Eureka, where I went through the grant orientation. So we will be starting on that very soon. It's just a matter of the initial paperwork that we have to do. It's not short, it's a CDBG grant, they're not fun. There's a lot of paperwork that we have to do. But we'll be starting on that pretty soon. We'll get some houses working on that.
CDBG grant. Mentions called houses. Give the property owner that way. And we divert that attention to other property.
On a limited basis. Now, we, if it's another house that qualifies in that same area, yeah, we just go to the next house, that's fine. If it's outside the target area, like we can't find enough applicants, then what I heard was that we could use it for emergency cases. So if somebody outside of that target area, maybe their furnace went out. Now, they would have to meet the income qualifications that anybody else receiving that, there's that. But they could potentially utilize some of those funds. Obviously, we would prefer not to do that, because that's a lot of extra paperwork. But the state really, really does not want to take back any of that. Because it's a big deal for them to process that, send it back to heaven. And of course, that's gonna be like, why didn't you spend this money? Maybe we don't need to send you such money. So, that too. So we don't, we don't want to do that, we want to spend all that money if we can, and that's the intention. The key factor is, yes, that's $300,000 grant, but sadly, $300,000 is not the total amount that's gonna be used for construction. Because you have to pay the administrator, and you get to pay those lovely fees for let-in payment and inspection services, which is all required by that grant. So it's not truly 300,000, but it's approximately $25,000 per house, is what the total, I guess, but. And then I finally noted that we had, we have an active code enforcement program. And we use that as an attempt to keep our immigrants from declining. So can anybody think of something that we have done in the last basically 10 years that's housing-related that I didn't mention in there?
I think you get all the cylinders, so. I haven't been here 10 years.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I really did not mention that. That's something, we did qualify for the rural housing incentive district, the downtown area for upper-floor housing. Now, that has not been utilized to date, but the program is in place for any projects that are actively talking to a number of developers that are interested in doing projects like that. But it's a big step, that's a lot of money for them, even with a program like that. So they have to be on the ball. In order to apply for that program, you have to write like a funding prospectus, business plan for what you're gonna do. And so it has to be somebody that knows what they're doing. It has to be an experienced, other than having experience housing developer necessarily. But they're gonna have to have probably a CPA on the so it's not Joe Blow off the street, is not going to be able to just simply decide that they want to use this program unless they have those connections to CPOs. But it is, it's a program that we probably should mention that we have. We can do RHIDs and other areas for green space. And it's something that we'll probably be using in the near future for some other subdivisions and other housing, larger housing projects. But it cannot be used right now for rehabilitation of housing, other than the downtown thing. The state is currently looking at modifying that statute a little bit, but how about legislature moves slower? So I don't know if that will actually pass the session, or if it'll even go. But there is a program that they're trying to do that would actually allow us to use these districts for rehabilitation. Which would help a lot when you only get $300,000 grants from CDG about every three or four years. So it will help speed that up, if we can get that passed. I actually reached out to Senator Ali to voice my support for that, so. And I don't know where that's going, but I did let him know that. He acknowledged that I sent it to him, so he didn't probably go like this, that's good. So I will add that note in there, thank you, and Uber complained to me that that was, that. So is the land program recent enough? It was kind of multi-person. I think that's one of the goals that they're reaching for. Yeah, we've had a land bank in some forms since long before I started the city. But the current land bank was, I think it was a savage in about 2018 or so. And then we, we really put properties in it until 19, and since then, well, actually, at first, it was not very popular, you had a lot of action. But 2021 was the year of the land bank. Yeah. I didn't want to mention that.
There's a goal instead of Kelly County Land Base Program.
The county does not have one, to the best of my knowledge. Winfield just started one a couple months ago, I think. So they're brand new to it too. Arc City is the only one that's had it for a long standing time. And in its current form, the statute that made it happen was only adopted in 17 or 18. So it's, it's still pretty new. We've always been able to do land banks for, well, I don't know, but what we did originally was put, when we had that 98 flood, there was a lot of properties that got bought out. And a lot of those properties got put into what we refer to as a land bank, so that we could get it back out. You were there for the 98 flood?
Yeah, I got funded, that house bought.
So you've experienced that. There is something, on a side note, that's not directly related to housing, but it kind of is. The city is actively looking at the community rating system program that FEMA has. And what that will do is reduce the cost of flood insurance for these properties. And actually, not just properties and flood, it'll be anybody that has a flood insurance policy, even if they're outside of that. We're working on that and hoping that that helps the housing in those areas. But that is, that's not an accomplishment, because that's just there. But I thought I mentioned that while we're talking. But we'll, I'll add the RHID, mentioned something about that. I'll add a little broader sentence maybe about the land bank too in that section, because that has definitely ramped up. It's, again, very, very popular. And we've had a few houses as a result of it. Habitat has built two two houses from that program, and they've got a third property. So there's been some of that. Tom Lowery built a house at D in Kansas from that project too, so. It's being used, and we're turning these properties back over to the tax, which is kind of the point. So does anybody have any comments about the contents of this chapter besides the calls? Missed anything, anybody else? All right. I'll take that as a note. So we talked about throughout this whole process of a comprehensive plan about developing goals or actions, that we could actually measure. Now, of course, there's gonna be some goals and actions that end up in the plan that are difficult to measure, just because that's some nature of the topic. But I think housing is probably an exception to that. For the most part, we should be able to make goals that we can actually achieve, we can measure, see if we're actually meeting them. And I really think that this will help the city commission as well. So when we're looking at different housing programs, housing is not something the city funds a lot of, it just really doesn't happen a lot. There are some places, though, that we do directly fund, we can. And that's when it comes to things like our fees. Those sort of things, we do have a lot. So what I did, well, first of all, what are we gonna call these? This section is originally called Goals and Actions. So what's the difference between a goal and an action?
A goal is something you try to think is a good idea. Yeah. Is, we're gonna do something about that. Except.
So do we want, do we want both in this chapter? And I'm asking this right now, so we can not have to have the discussion pre-stopped.
You have all the goals.
What I started to do on the next page, for the most part, these are actions and not goals. Well, I don't know, I say that, and the first one's more of a goal.
I didn't know.
But
I think the action
The action is more like what you see back in that housing, it's called a housing action, but, yeah. So these are more actionable things. What, what I listed here are more goals. Now, what I listed here on page 316, all I really did was try to take some of the goals and actions from the previous chapter during. Take it or leave it, but I thought, I wanted to put something in there just so I could show you what I was saying. And so what I did was, we, remember, we looked at Winfield's plan, I think we focused on their park plan when we talked about parks. And in that plan, they had a listing of their goals and actions. And they assigned a priority level. They had, they had a topic for ongoing, they had short term, they had medium term, and they had long term. I kind of like that as the staff person, instead of assigning I kind of like that as the staff person, instead of assigning a specific date to it, because they all know that things pop up, viruses pop up out of the blue. They change everything overnight. And so what I, what I just proposed was that we keep those. And what I did in that first section is I listed what I thought each of them meant. I got rid of ongoing because I didn't really like that. Short term made more sense. So I said, short term is something that we probably should be able to achieve in the next five years. Medium is more like five to 10 years. And long term is probably 10 years or more. And those are the kind of goals that we don't even really anticipate meeting before we rewrite the plan. But I think it's important to put them in there. Still, this is, this is the dream session. We still want to have some of those in there. Now, there's not a whole lot for housing necessarily. I think our housing issue probably needs to be looked at in the next. If we don't, we're going to just keep getting better. So do we want to have like two tables, like one for goals and one for actions? Or do we want?
I give it is for every section.
Very tight.
Maybe on the goal, we can drill down to easily obtain an action or port.
Just going to throw it out there, but could they all not be goals? I mean, just because it's an action line doesn't mean it can't be a goal. Developing your housing. That's a goal, but it's also an action in a way. I think the forward slash just makes for the morning.
That's kind of why I even started this topic, started this conversation.
But when you throw out a goal, there's got to be certain steps how you want to achieve that goal. State the goal. State how you want to achieve that goal.
So maybe what we do is we, we say, just using this as an example, that we want more senior housing. And then we have some actions there. Well, what are we going to do to get more senior housing? And then we I guess we could still assign a priority to.
I don't think there's going to be that many goals. We have some of the goals up there. More housing, higher quality housing.
Yeah.
And then you just have actions under each header.
Okay. So I guess maybe that's where we should start. What, what sort of goals, what sort of goals do you see us needing to meet in kind of a short term? And again, I listed those from the previous plan, but
we kind of know how many housing units for short or we need, or people get busted for jobs.
Yeah, the, the housing, well, actually, the, the Cali County one has a pretty good listing of what they thought we needed. I didn't provide you with the copy of the hat today. But I can just really quickly read what it said here. It said, back in 2014, a study and plan was commissioned by the county. It's a big later 19. The plan estimated that 199 new housing units would be needed in Ark City. It even split it up on the rent. I didn't give you this today. And I only did that because
So all the goals, maybe we can go back to those public comments. We should include that stuff. For example, there's a shortage of people who are able to pay rent on renters. Maybe that doesn't follow in this section, but.
Well, what is the issue there?
Issue is they don't want to pay a job.
That's what I'm.
It's a mismatch between jobs and housing.
Yeah, and I think there was, one of those questions actually said that, that there is, there is a gap between, so we
The housing costs.
So housing costs are too high for at least some residents. So we encourage building houses.
Well, in those people.
And that was kind of the first entry there, and that is what that's about. Encourage availability of housing for all ages and customers. So I think that, I don't know if that's the way you worded it, but that overall goal is probably still there.
What about number four, price of homes? Or where they should be, it's exorbitant property taxes, the price.
Do we need to focus on finding a way to lower the mill levy?
That's actually mentioned multiple times, so it's pretty important.
Well, and how, how can we accomplish that?
Obviously.
I'm trying to prompt you all, make sure you, maybe we need some more coffee or something here.
We'll work on it.
I understand. I'm not really talking. Well, when I think about a topic like that, one of the things that, that I notice in this community, and our mayor has actually made this one of her goals, is to try to get as many of the properties that are not on the tax rolls back on the tax rolls. And that's where programs like the land bank can be used to do that. And kind of the way that program works, and I'm backing up a little bit, but.
I heard some people talk about addressing the criteria that become used to appraise houses. So obviously, it seems exorbitant.
Unfortunately, the city doesn't have a whole lot of power there. Oh, mine is an example. My house, when I bought it last year, was appraised at about $98,000. Well, I purchased the house for 150, because it's worth 150, it praised 150 commercially. And so for the first year, I'm paying taxes at $98,000. But because I paid 150,000 for it, my new appraisal that I just got is 152,000. So my appraisal went up basically 60%. Now, is my property worth 150,000? I still think it is, and so I'm not trying, I'm not going to challenge it. But the system is a little bizarre, because why was it so low before I bought it? And if, if that had been a little more stable, like maybe they had been paying our 120, 130, 140, 150 over the last several years, maybe our mill levy could have been lowered. If this is happening citywide or countywide, it's no wonder that we have shortages. Now, there are cases where the taxes just to, I'm not going to say that, because some, some, we have some properties that are.
The last house I bought was appraised by a good 30%, 30% over. Then the window of protest, that is, what, two days out of the year? So I would definitely encourage my houses, that's first thing to look at, taxes, while the school.
Well, the one positive thing about, positive depends how you look at it, but I'm sure you all are aware that countywide, most of the real estate went up 20 or 30% at this level. So the one positive thing about that, if you can call it a positive, is that may force the mill levy down. Whether that, that happens. It's going to depend on how much it's not dependent, but it's plans. So it depends on, like, if the city commission or whatever government body decides that they have this influx of cash and they want to go ahead and have that, then the bill is not going to go anywhere. So but at least, at least our government has something going on.
I see a lot of good goals in these public comments. What we're looking for is public.
So what else do we see in there? So we, we saw the housing costs are too high for some residents. We saw the taxes are too high.
Revivalization, revitalization, single family homes, subdevolution. It's cheaper to fix a house up than just build a new one.
And I honest, I'm not exactly sure what that second sentence is referring to.
So if you have a home, I think they're saying it should be, it doesn't need new codes, should be grandfathered in. I think they're referring to, but in particular, fire codes.
Stuff for housing, for the most part, we get multi, we try to really recover people. When you get, when you get into the multifamily, it's, yeah, there's some challenges there. There's, anytime like a new apartment complex, for example, is built, you always have the conversation about sprinkling, which is very expensive. There are some options there, and we've even looked into it as a city about how we can deal with that. Usually what it means is that you have to put firewalls between units, not every unit, but between clusters of the units. And so they have to, the developers are going to have to decide whether or not that's.
Well, I would say more like apartments in downtown.
And that we are working on too. It largely depends on what's underneath it. But for a small number, I forget the number, if I throw a number out there, it's beating. Okay. But if you keep it down to a certain level, you don't have to adhere to the fire sprinkler. And what you do instead is have like a fire department system that's on every floor. So there's some ways to get around there. Same thing with ADA. There's some ways to get around that if you have a certain number of units. So when I talk about ADA, mostly referring to elevators, which, and most of our downtown residents would be exorbitant to put in. Especially if you're talking about like one floor. So we are trying to work with people that are wanting to develop this housing. And then using the RHID to help offset any that we can. But I do definitely agree that we need to work with people to make sure that we're not going to get too difficult to do this fixing up of homes.
So the study that was done by the county I, when I, when I look at the houses sale here, in Ark City, it doesn't seem to quite match up with what they're saying. The housing shortage is so bad that why now is houses for sale?
We don't have certain houses for sale.
I'm in the neighborhood, it was quite a few.
You must have been looking at it from now on, I wasn't.
Part of that might be somebody trying to capitalize on the market rate too. Markets, I understand that, you know, a couple of weeks, it's changed a little bit, but last year has just been, it's a great time to sell a house. So maybe just trying it out.
Well, it's odd. In the past, we have had real estate people on this commission, right? I don't think we have anybody that's in real estate. Unless I'm missing something. That is kind of strange. It's worked out. Now, I would agree that there is some stuff in there that, I don't know where the counter person. And some of the, I mean, some are really specific.
Maybe it's not the number of houses, but the pricing studies.
Wow, the problem is they used ACS instead of actually.
That's a good point.
Assessing the stock, we actually.
We, we noticed that when we were doing the hat, that the problem is they didn't use census data, 2010 census data. They used the American Community Survey, which, again, I had to use that in this plan because we don't, still don't have the 2020 housing data, not all of it. And every time they do a census, they change what they put in that anyways. But there was a lot of estimation they were basing decisions off of. And if you look at those charts, there's very large margin of errors. And they would have used the, those 2010 numbers when they were making this. And again, that's not 2010 census, that's 2010 census data.
There's currently 53 properties, including land, for sale in Ark City. 24 of those are pending. So that's 29 that are available, currently available on market. Or you look up, I get notifications on Realtor.com and that's on the list too, so.
You think that's accurate?
I do.
That comes from the MLS, I think.
It's great. So anybody who lists in town is automatic, gets put out. Unless people are just pricing for sale, I haven't looked at stuff like that. If it's on the MLS system.
Do you have any idea what the demand for housing is?
Eighty thousand and less is moving right now. Six months ago, it was 200,000. So that market has changed. Anything 30,000 or less right now gets sold in 24 hours. We bought two yesterday.
I have a friend that's Realtor, and she said there's a lot of requests for rentals, but not so many. Person, and that might have to do with price.
The houses that are selling for 30,000 less, they completely need rehab. So we'd rather either buy them or go somewhere than to let someone else buy them and then let them just go pop. So that's why we buy them. Because they are beyond livable at that point.
Well, let me, since you're a housing developer, let me ask you this question. What, what obstacles are there for you for doing more of that?
Time. I mean, we're going to do so much, so. Time. I mean, we're gonna do so much, so.
Maybe we need more builders.
Possibly, but doing what we do is a huge risk. I know it's a, it's a huge risk. We sold a million dollars of the property last year. So we had six hundred thousand out of our pocket invested. So it sounds real great, but it goes didn't sell. You know, there's a backside to that also. So there's a lot of risk in what we do. We've been doing it almost twenty years. So we're on the other side of things where there's not a tremendous amount of risk anymore, but to get people involved in it is. I've had two people this year, I'm teaching them how to do what we do and they're buying properties now, doing what we do. My daughter, like I said, my daughter, she's nineteen, she bought two yesterday. So she's starting to do that. It's just getting people trained how to do it properly. Yes.
So we don't need to things up here, I don't like that. We got people doing that.
I, I mean, there's a lot of us that do it in this town, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, and I think.
Cody, don't you have some rentals too?
Yeah. So there's, there's some of that that happens. I guess the question is, how much rental do we need versus own, own rent?
We filled three of our compass point units yesterday because people are selling their homes because they don't want more maintenance. So we're filling that need out there.
Is that seniors?
I would say fifty-five now.
Okay, so they would qualify, I think fifty-five out of about this most part, I taste.
We should probably include that in this plan. Oh, I know it's already there, but what's the action to building more affordable houses? I think that's the question.
But that's the big thing, what's affordable anymore?
What is.
I mean, you have to, when we run our ratios, I mean, I'm building in the most expensive time in history right now. And what we're asking for rent is so narrow margin, that's why we have to build in volume. So to build new houses. We had to put two houses on hold because you can't afford to build. You, you just literally cannot afford building and we're not in to just build it for fun. So we put two houses for sale. We already built one out in Lakewoods. And we can't afford to build them back out there because there's only a certain price range where you can build. You can't put a half million dollar house out there because you have to. So what's a portable housing?
Yeah, maybe that's something we should ask the citizens. Maybe that should be a question.
The trouble with the citizens, they don't process that cheating jump from fifty-five to seventy-one dollars cheat today. So the city can't process what it takes to build.
So. Yeah, I agree with that, but they don't know what they can afford.
If you're gonna get a wide array.
Yeah.
The people you're talking about renting to, it's not a typical Arc City rental.
Well, I mean, we've got several creeks down there because I keep in, I mean, they're. We, we have, we have a hundred and thirty some rentals, so we have from the five fifty clear up to the eleven hundred. So we have a huge gap, so we hit every gap, every price range in there. The trouble with the lower rentals, you have so much turnaround. Cause they can't afford.
Which one sell, do you sell most of the pressure?
Do we sell or do we rest?
Do you sell?
I, I, anymore, we just hit the higher end, higher end stuff because if I can't make twenty-five grand, it's not worth my time. So you can't build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house anymore because you have a hundred and thirty thousand in it. And by the time you do your closing fees and all the other good stuff, you walk away with thirteen grand. Well, there's three months of my life for four grand.
So in your opinion, you think we should build more multiple family buildings and single homes?
I mean, single family is what we need. We just can't afford to do it, right? I mean, I would love to build a whole housing development. I've been in talking to Josh. If I can get a house and film built for like a hundred and eighty thousand less, because right now a starter home used to be the seventy, eighty thousand dollar range. A starter home is a hundred and thirty grand anymore. So in the trouble with people not affording it is if they didn't have the two brand cars, the camper and the boat, they could probably afford the house.
Yeah.
So.
We can change.
That's what I'm saying. So as far as if you ask people what affordable housing is. Well, they could afford a decent house if only they budgeted, but you can't tell people that.
Well, I've seen a lot of trending towards. Kind of alternative stuff like the tiny homes and the storage container, just because of the forty dollar stuff. Think it'd be possible to. Build homes to match budgets regardless of the size.
I mean, you still, you, you, we still figure housing on per square foot. So. I get my Lowe's bills or my bids from Lowe's and then I break that down per square foot. And so when I propose my budget to the bank, I'm still funding it. I can't build myself, I mean, for free myself. I'm still at eighty-six bucks a square foot. And I still have to pay my, all my other subs. So you're talking, if you build a thousand square foot house, I've got eighty-six grand I'm working for free. In that thousand square foot house.
So if you build a five hundred square foot house, you cut that in half, no, you can see.
A five hundred square foot, that's gonna be a studio apartment.
That's what people are living in a lot of these communities. That's why, that's the trend I was talking about before. It's, they're just. Locking their whole ball or.
Right.
Basically.
The problem is. Part of what he said though is it's. Builder doesn't go into the, to the job of not making money. I'd say it weird, but. There are some builders out there that actually do very well with really small things, but at the kid, it's volume. So if they build. Like if a builder came to town to build a tiny homes, they would probably want to build fifty of them. Otherwise, they're never going to make any money. The other thing is, I would imagine. That they're going to want to hold on to them and rent them, sell them, because that's the only way they're ever gonna make. And sadly, that's also how multifamily, well, multifamily is traditionally directed, but. We're probably not going to see much multifamily that is sold. Just because there's not a market for it. And that's not very common in this part of the country either. Towns.
So in this plan, there was kind of a ratio of, I thought I saw maybe. Didn't, but there's kind of a ratio of rentals to. Old to home.
And the, to know the fourteen one?
Oh, it is Cali County. Wrong, but there was, there was. There's those numbers here on quality. So family purchase rehab and so that sixty.
That was the. That must have been countywide that one, which is, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, there's none of that.
So as a city, you know, kind of, I think the question is what can we do to help the builders?
Honestly, I think that's the biggest obstacle right now.
You already did a big one. Just by if you build X amount of units, I think it's, it's a twelve a year. That you waive our, our fees.
That's big.
Well, it's just the permanent fees. I mean, because that's.
Oh, this is significant.
They add up, so it's, I can spend probably twenty-five to thirty grand a year probably in just all my fees.
Yeah.
It's pretty expensive when you are building a lot.
It was right on the bottom line too.
It, it takes, it's money right out of my pocket.
I was, I think compass point was, would have been somewhere in that range if we had other.
It's gonna be almost sixty grand, I think. It's gonna be, it was about thirteen hundred dollars per unit. So.
You feel like you're getting the full cooperation of.
Seventy thousand, two hundred is what I say is what the city did. So no, I have to fight tooth and nail for everything.
Okay, so maybe that's something we need to work on.
And, and I fight in, I'm in Josh's office a lot. I talk to. I mean, I, I shouldn't, you shouldn't as a builder, you shouldn't have to fight so hard.
I agree.
So and I, you know, the Washington properties, the class example, I'm beating my head against the wall. It's just vacant land sitting there. We'll build something. But why is it so hard?
Yeah, I get these complaints from the general contractor. That's definitely address.
Well, definitely think that needs to be an act that's in here. Because if there's an action in here that says that we, and to be fair, there was an action in the previous plan, which is what he was, when he initially approached the city. There was an action in the last plan that talked about. It was, it was worded poorly, I thought. But it encouraged us to waive fees for, basically. And that's what it's gonna have to be, unless, unless we get rid of fees for everything. The problem is. There is a certain, there is a certain cost to running the inspection part. So.
And you know, I, my, I thought my question bit, and you've got some of these, not everybody's a contractor, right? So when they go out there multiple times. Every trip is out there, it's fuel, I mean, I get it. But some people have no business doing what we do. And Mike said it's very frustrating, but you have to go out there multiple times. And that's time, energy, fuel. So I understand their speeds, but.
If somebody's building one house, thirteen hundred dollars.
You can eat it. And, and I, I've never asked for fees on any of my houses. I've never, ever. Multifamily, that's why, it was kind of my accident. Josh sent it to me and I started highlighting all the stuff, so I went in and presented.
That's an example of us not. Doing what the plan told us to do. And we want to try to avoid that, because there were several things in there that, that were.
So what we start, what would be an action? To assist the developers of buildings?
That would be one.
I hate to think more than that, when the land, the land bank is getting bigger, the city has. In your office, what? Fill the other day or a month ago, just looking at all the land the city has. Here, what the city would like to do with that land, find developers. All my Realtor does is drive up and down streets all day. And if she finds a property all interested, she sends it to me. And if we buy it, great, but we don't.
She calls me all the time too. She calls me all the time too.
You know, I'm one of those people doing finding, so I don't have to do it all the time. My daughter, any free time, you take different routes, find houses that are dilapidated or whatever, give me the address. If you have land. I'm willing to build on it. But find us as, as developers, as builders. And tell, you present a plan to us instead of we keep presenting plans to you guys.
If you have a large developer and he comes to Arc City, he wants to build a neighborhood, he's getting pushed back. He's gonna find a path, he needs resistance, he's gonna build another city where.
It's happened.
We should give value, maybe.
I still think that's why we don't have burgers in Kyrst.
She's more or less that big loss.
Yes, it depends on her, but I still think that's what happened. It was too much pushback.
Yeah.
The community as a whole, not any one particular.
Pushback from the community.
Yes. If you're, if you remember, the community's permission, that's all the difference it did back then, but on the rezoning was a challenge to get through.
If the community pushes back, their citizens, they have that right. Cities should be neutral. As well.
Well. You ready to follow what happened with our last rezone? It didn't go very well, the city commission. They didn't want to rezone it because they didn't like what the use was. Even though. I'm trying to turn that to. If. Yeah.
Don't throw anybody in the wrong way to say it.
Tell me what.
So you're not calling anybody out, you're just telling.
Oh, they didn't want to, the main reason was they didn't want to do it because it wasn't a tax payment, which I get. And I think Brandon had a little bit of heartburn with that. I mean.
Was so the health included?
Yeah, so then, so then.
I will say something I have to say. Hospitals are overloaded with. Poor people, for lack of a better word. So something like that. So if you need a procedure. You know, especially with the COVID, if you go to the hospital, they put you on, on a waiting list. Or something like this, believe you. You know, open up sort of beds for people who have fully just afford to hospital, but.
That's ultimately what the, where our hospital CEO.
I'm seeing the same, trying to generate.
It's a delicate. So I think we got a couple of really good. Actions for that particular. Just, just encouraging people to build houses. That's, that's what we need, whether that's a developer or it's. The individual trying to build a house, that we don't have a lot of that going on. For the most part, most people have done, they had to build their house, so they don't see the correction that. But maybe fixing up their house, we can do little things to encourage that.
Maybe we should reevaluate the cost of. This as well, I guess the other cities, my full premise there. Quite a bit less than what they are here.
We can reevaluate fees as well. Do a kind of a fee study. It's been a while since we looked at that. Actually, really, the last time we adjusted the fee was when we did. The latest code cycle. There were some adjustments there, but they actually. As a result of that. And some of our, and we discovered this. With the sewer tap fee. The way that we were doing it. We were charging way too much money for what we were doing. And the city commission actually agreed to open that fee because of that. Because, uh, you dealt with that before, I'll say that it can be.
I just look at it as relatives and other cities and like working. We just seem quite a bit higher than the town, so.
Okay, well, we can. We can put that on after. So is there any other? Problems? Maybe we'll look at it that way. Are there any other problems that we haven't really talked about or how nearly did?
Dilapidation also.
We really haven't thought about that. One of the things that that grant could be used for, we didn't use it, we didn't choose to use it for this, this time. It could be used for demolitions. So if we had a target area that needed a, needed several demolitions, we can actually utilize that. Our biggest problem right now for demolitions is we don't have money to do it. And a lot of the cases when. Somebody has a house that's in such horrible shape that the city just needs to content and tear it down. Of it, they didn't fix it up, they don't have money to fix it. And so they also don't have the money to have it tear down. And so they just kind of, you just take it, sit there, we don't care anymore, we just, you know, we don't do it. The problem is that costs money. And. Typically, that budget gets, starts out at a hundred thousand dollars every, every year and it gets cut and ass. Can you ever hear?
Can you put those houses in the land bank or does it have to be?
We have.
Property without a structure on it.
Well. Ship, the properties I'm talking about though, are houses that need to go.
Well, you have the loss of materials that. Mindset's kind of changed.
Yeah, we have changed a little bit how we deal with that too. Mike Bellis has gone a number of times and worked with the property owner. And told them that the city would not charge them for the demolition if they agreed to donate the properties to the living. And so we have done that two or three times in the past couple of years and got a hold of it that way. So not only did we. And got a hold of it that way. So not only did we. Get the house torn down, need to be torn down, we also found a way to hopefully pay for it on the other end. And even if we don't pay for it by selling it and we donate it. At least we're getting a house which is going to. At taxes. But for most of those, we're probably going to be pretty tight on. Don't think that for that reason, because it's going to get upside down, I think, hurry. But at the same time, what you mentioned was we need to find ways to keep homeless from getting to that one. Sadly, I don't have an answer for that. Because if you have a citizen that can't afford to fix up their house, can't afford to hire a contractor. The house just continues to get worse and worse and worse and worse. That's our biggest problem. That's why we've applied to this grant. Because there's citizens in that neighborhood, they can't afford to fix it up, so.
Especially when you pay.
And often that's what the problem is. contributes to it. But we can continue to apply for those grants, but again. We only get to fix up dozen or so houses about every three to five years, but it's very rare to. And most of our contractors are, let me rephrase, our developers, housing developers. Don't want to flip houses. They would rather tear the house down and separate. But it costs money to demolish a house too. So.
Well, I bought, I bought an old house and I determined it was a lot cheaper. I wanted to tear it down. Timber was still good on the frame, so. Increased material cost, it was actually a lot cheaper.
We do have a, a lot of people that. And it's the kind of the investors that Brandon's part of that come in and they just tend to flip a house too. We do still have that. And sort of in an effort to make that a little easier, the city commission several years ago. Passed an ordinance that allowed. Landlords to work on their own homes without having to hire a contractor. And that helps a little bit. Of course, they still need to hire somebody for electrical, plumbing and that kind of stuff. Yeah. Because. But they are allowed to do stuff like. Redo the sheetrock. Rebuild walls where needed. They are allowed to do that, so.
That's looking for positive stuff, that's positive for accomplishment.
We can put that in. The sad thing is. We haven't been able to allow landlords to do their own roofs. But that's a state statute problem. That's preventing us from allowing that. That's probably our biggest complaint right now is that we won't let landlords do their own roofs.
They do it on the weekend.
Let's do it on the weekend. Yes. Anything else we want to add?
Is there any other discussions? You know, motion that you're amazing. There's no more discussions.
I can, what I'll do is I'll take everything that we talked about today and I have to listen to the recording. To, but I will. I'll put something together and maybe I'll bring it back next month to. But we're going to focus on. I think we're ready. Same second. Andrew, can you bring me more of our appointment situation?